Yeah.
All right, thank you, everybody. Tonight is the regular monthly meeting of the Clinton and Lynn Wettman, Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Yes, either.
Kathy's gonna call the roll.
Kathy might call the roll tonight. I'm gonna be your clerk tonight, so yes, Scott Harley. Ryan Tartuzel had emailed earlier that he was not going to be able to attend. Um, Mike Florio. Mike, not there?
Yeah.
Oh, he is there. Okay, hi, Mike. Um, I see Eddie Albarino is on. Um, Lawrence Edward, Lawrence Edwards? No?
Believe he emailed Dave, gonna be here.
Yeah, I got, I got a text from him, but our email, but it was kind of strangely worded, um, so I couldn't tell whether or not he was gonna attend. He said, "I will need be to attend," so he must have been talking to text and just came through, kind of funny. Um, Bert, I hear Bert, so Bert here. Uh, Thomas Welch?
Here.
Here. Robert Corson? No, Robert?
Here.
Oh, he is there. I'm not hearing it, I'm sorry. Um, Chris Warvav?
Here.
Okay, and Douglas Elliott?
Here.
Great. So we're just missing Ryan Tartuzel and Lawrence Edwards.
So Kathy, can I sit Doug for Ryan and Chris for Larry?
Sure.
You guys are voting tonight. All right, um, item agenda number two minutes. Uh, we need to review and approve the minutes from our October first, twenty forty-four regular meeting. Nobody has any edits to those, so I'll make a little group.
I'd like to make an approval, make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Florio, any discussion on the minutes? All those voting in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna oppose, abstain. Commission carries. Uh, item number three, this is an application, IWC twenty-four dash five. Could be five Liberty Place Unit Master. Uh, Ellen Bartlett PE is the applicant, Star Bay Hill Realty LLC is the owner. So an application for activity within the established upland review area for residential development, map fifty-three, block fifty-four, zone R sixteen. Don't believe the applicant is here tonight?
No, the applicant, Ellen Bartlett, is actually out of town right now. I think the, the order of business is to formally receive, it's complete for receipt, so the information that's required and fees are all paid. Um, the next step would be to discuss a potential site visit when you have an opportunity. Um, and then given the sort of early hour of nightfall and such, we wanna get to, try to get something on the books with you, um, before your next meeting. So you can make a determination next time about significant activity.
Okay, so as far as meetings, now that it's daylight savings, it's dark out, we in the past have been doing them on the weekends. We were doing them on Sunday morning, but I think, Chris, you're probably busy on a day Sunday, um, so it's everybody.
If it's possible, I mean, I'd be willing, I don't know what everyone's work schedule is. I could also, instead of meeting later in the day, if anyone would want to meet before work, I could come in early and do like an eight AM or something like that on a weekday.
Yeah, the weekends are just a little bit harder to get staff in board to help staff the sidewalk, so if it's possible, it would be a lovely accommodation for Kathy to be able to, to do that, but that's the commission's gotta decide what works for you.
So, up to the commission, now that it's dark out, but when do we want to set sidewalks? What's good for everybody? And it doesn't need to be for everybody, we could always go separately to but it'd be best to try to get to most people.
And I'm watching. I could take a second. Noon on. I could door, I don't know how to read house.
Of noon on? Mornings, not.
Anytime.
Anytime. Mornings, okay. Um, are you okay going separate?
For this one, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. Say noon on Sunday, the seventeenth. Rain date.
Mr. Chairman, Su- Su- Sundays, I have church. And then I have hospice. I have hospice, I cannot do Sundays.
Okay, um.
And we also remember that the applicant needs to, we, we need to throw out a few dates right now, so the applicant has an opportunity to see what she's available for to show you the site as well.
Okay, what about Saturday? Saturdays are okay, Saturday morning? Get it out of the way?
Saturday, the next few weeks, I have, I have plans every Saturday this coming, I have a professional conference in Bristol. And then I have something the following Saturday, too. Um, it's just, you know, 'cause I'm, I'm up in Broughton, um. Is there anybody that can do, I could even do a couple of sidewalks, if people are willing, I could do like a, you know, a partial group on a a weekday in the morning or in later day, or, uh, I don't know if that's at all possible for people.
I'm, I'm, I'm working ninety-nine percent during the day, during the week.
Okay.
Saturdays I'm free, but Sundays I have the church and the hospice, so.
Yeah.
Okay, for, why don't, for this one, all of us can do Saturday, why don't we do Saturday, ten AM? Um, and then Kathy, we'll, we'll talk about next meeting on just generally through the winter.
Okay.
Everybody.
That, that sounds good.
So what, what day is that, uh, at ten AM?
Well.
So if we looked at, uh, ten sixteen and ten twenty-three and see if we can get somebody from the applicant's team to be available?
Eleven sixteen and eleven twenty-three, yeah.
Eleven. Eleven thirty-three.
Oh, yeah, when is Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving's the twenty-eighth.
Oh, that's eleven, right? I, I'm.
Yeah, no, Abby said ten, it's eleven.
I'm looking at, well, I'm, 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 I'm in Florida, I.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, it's hard, the holidays are coming and the months are kind of melding together. Yeah, so I, I think, Scott, please, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were saying ten AM on Saturday, the sixteenth of November, or Saturday, the twenty-third of November, and you wanted to check with the applicant?
Kathy, we did, um, um, uh, FaceTime before.
Yes.
Time again?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I could, I could do that, um, I, I just feel bad, like I said, not knowing it was Saturdays, I, I have plans for the holidays.
So.
When it comes, time, hang on a second, when it comes to FaceTime, folks can do sort of a one-off with, with either Kathy or me, or we can kind of walk you around, that's fine. We want to make sure that if we're posting a meeting where there's gonna be a forum of the commission attending a sidewalk, that we make sure it's posted. FaceTime is hard for something, because then it has to be a hybrid meeting and posted a little bit differently. So we just want to make sure that the FaceTime is really sort of the, the one-off, one person at a time kind of thing, um, and then the rest of it is, is with the group. But what we'll do, the app, the applicant is back in town on the fourteenth, so I won't be able to confirm until then what her availability is, um, but we'll, as soon as we know, we will, we will tell everybody what's going on.
Okay, so why don't we set it at sixteenth at ten o'clock? Rain date slash if the applicant make it on the sixteenth, we'll do the following weekend.
Okay.
You gotta squeeze it in this month, because it's a short month and we're already a week. Because then the following weekend, same season. I'm kind of. The area, okay, so I'll need a motion to accept the application and then set it at sixteenth at ten, eight o'clock. So move. Okay, who have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, all those voting in favor say aye.
Aye.
One opposed or abstain? So just let us know, Abby, whatever works for the applicant, try to do it. All right, item agenda number four, administrative review. So first up is IWC twenty-four dash one. This is three twenty-seven East Main Street, Greg Fettis PE is the applicant, Shoreline Partners LLC is the owner, application for regulated activity within zero to fifty feet of an inland wetlands or a water course for new mixed-use development. One-way traffic around building, parking, stormwater system, septic system, retaining walls and underground utilities. Assessors map eighty-five, block sixty-nine, lot one twenty-one in the zone B four. Uh, so if everyone remembers, we held public hearing, we closed the public hearing. So we're no longer taking any public testimony or from the applicant. So really tonight, it's all about deliberation. Um, I kind of had the feeling that we were leaning towards an approval from just kind of general discussion from last week or last month. So there is a draft motion that everyone has. Anyone does want to make a motion, you can stick to that, um, or we can have general conversation of any specifics, like we'd like to see in an approval. Um, kind of Floris, look for anybody.
Have, have the owners, uh, seen this? Motion?
Not until it was only finalized today, so not until today, so things especially like. Right, so, so the, I mean, the commission gets to set the terms of the permit, and so the question for the commission is, does this address any outstanding issues that weren't resolved by the end of the discussion and the record of the public hearing? Uh, and there was an outstanding elements from the town engineer and, and consulting wetlands, uh, soil scientist that we tried to work into this. The only new piece of information is the bond amount, um, which was based on estimates from the town engineer based on a takeoff of the, the linear footage of silt fence and, and all that kind of stuff, um, on the, shown on the, the plans that were the most recent ones. Some of these elements, like, um, condition ten, the site management, that's a direct quote out of the stormwater report from the applicant, so it's not all uh, stuff that's entirely, uh, new. But there, but they hadn't seen, um, the, the one, the one thing that was perhaps unexpected, because we had talked about test pits and if soil, you know, soils are not suitable, then we would have to come back for more discussion, um, so that shouldn't be too much of a surprise, that's in the record, but the, the number for the bonding is, is the only thing.
So our town engineer recommended twenty-six thousand five hundred of the bonding note?
Correct.
And then withhold, twenty-five hundred until two growing seasons?
So the twenty-five hundred withholding was my recommendation, just because this stuff goes in, if it, you know, takes some time to, to cycle through, then we have the ability to, to push for replacement plans.
Anyone have any questions on what was written in our draft motion? And this is just recommendation, as far as language, we're free to change anything that we see, but.
These were all things that we discussed in our last meeting?
Um, either that or left unaddressed, right, like?
Correct, so, yeah. So some of, some of these are direct quotes out of the town engineer's last letter that was not, that was submitted into your record. The applicant, Mr. Fettis, provided some responses to those things, and these were the outstanding items that, that when, um, Chuck, the town engineer stood up at the end of the meeting and said, "Look, we, you know, we still have some final questions about the following," some of those included the, um, underlying soil conditions and whether it was suitable to support wetland habitat, um, any area where, um, water was going to um, perk into the ground or any of those kinds of things. There were assumptions made about underlying soil, but no test pit data was available. So some of what these conditions request is that that data be available prior to the start of construction, so when they're out there to set silt fence and, and sort of move things along before they get too far, if there's any, um, you know, concern, it gives additional time for folks to resolve those issues, or if they need to come back for any reason. Um, then you have, have the, the information. What is in your record is that our town engineer is essentially saying that absent these sort of proof, absence of proof of, of what the underlying soils do, um, the, the entire design of this, of the stormwater treatment system and, and site is is based on the function of these created wetlands. Uh, the applicant in your record did provide information, you know, based on the proximity and what they found in other test pits on site, that they have very strong confidence that this, these are not going to come up with anything other than suitable soils for their intended use. But the, the issue here is that the commission doesn't have that information, and your, your engineering team suggested that you should. So that's, that's the reason that those are, are still, they're the only, all sort of unresolved pieces, and that test pit data, um, should clear that up and hopefully will be exactly what the applicant expects it to be.
Could you or someone else talk about number three, about possibly the water? And it burns, um.
So this, yeah.
I think that would be open to turn.
I think there is a running it through, um, there was a, there was a storage element within the hydro pad modeling, and I am not an engineer, so I, you know, too, too much, too much technical is probably, I'm not the person to, to describe, so if you need additional explanation of the comment in the record, certainly, um, the town engineer could probably provide it at another time. But essentially, um, wanting to understand that the setting in the hydro pad model as it was run and described in the report submitted to the commission didn't necessarily explain what the actual velocity would be over that north-to-south sort of piece, and so that, that was really the the question, was is there any erosion potential in the velocity of water as it goes over that burn? What's the, what's the volume it's entering and how quickly, based on elevation, is it intended to release? And is that information clear? It may be a simple question for, for Mr. Fettis to just answer, um, prior to the start of construction and do administratively after the fact, but, but that was an outstanding question from the engineer.
Or do you want to make a motion to approve this?
It will always be.
Sure, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve IWC twenty-four dash one, three point seven East Main Street, Greg Fettis PE, applicant Shoreline Partner LLC. Application for regulated activity within zero to fifty feet from the wetlands. Our part, books. New mixed-use development. One, you're gonna want to read back this whole thing? Okay, sorry, let's get back to it.
Right, that has to be read into the record if we're six.
Technically, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, let me get back to this, um. Greg Fettis dated May third, twenty twenty-four, and revised through September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and include sheets of five of twelve titled reading plans revised through September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and further described in the stormwater manager report. Revised through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Following conditions. One, prior to start of work, the applicant shall provide evidence, including, uh, soil test pit data to satisfaction of the town engineer consulting soil scientist, demonstrating that the soil immolated existing wetlands were those wetlands resource areas will maintain the hydro hydrophobic required in function as sustainable to wetlands. Two, prior to the start of work, the applicant shall address the comments, six, the town engineer's letter dated September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. A, six, the designer must provide documents of the SQM standard two stormwater well quality control. This requires reducing the post-development two-year storm to fifty percent of the pre-development two-year storm, year year storm. This must be calculated and documented in the stormwater management report. Designer providing the comparisons post-development flows in the infiltration system, in the infiltration system that does not compare to pre-development flows. Even post-development flow, based on the drainage calculation, the two-year pre-development flows is five point one eight CFM in the post-development flow is three point nine eight CFMs, which does not provide for a two-year fifty percent post of pre-development reduction. A direction comparison of pre-development flows and post-development flows must be made to determine if standard two is met. Prior, number three, prior to the start of work, the applicant shall address the comment twenty-five, the town engineer's letter, letter dated September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. A, twenty-five, the north and southwest lands informed by the which acted as the rear of these weapons. The rear discharge from north and southwest end is negated by the automatic storage and load flow setting in the hydro pad, therefore it is difficult to determine the velocity of flow over the burn. Possibly determine that then burns will corrode when they overtop. The designer must evaluate the velocities over the burns determining if the break to sustain, sustain, stable or if needed to be, lining still. Number four, prior to start of work, the applicant shall provide a required sediment and erosion control weapon planning maintenance bond in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred. This bond shall remain in place until the required bill document are submitted to the wetland enforcement. Enforcement officer will review and affirmative decision that the site is stable. Twenty-five hundred dollars of the bond shall be held until wetland plan, demonstrate survival through the two growing season. Number five, at least, uh, at least two weeks prior to the start of work, the applicant shall provide contact information for all contractors, employers, on the work of wetland enforcement, wetland enforcement officer. All right, number six, prior to the start of work, the applicant, contractor shall meet with the wetland enforcement officer on site to discuss destruction protection and compliance with sediment and erosion control plan. Number seven, the wetlands enforcement officer shall inspect erosion, erosion and sediment control upon installation and shall perform regular inspection and maintenance controls throughout the duration of the project. Number eight, during construction, there should be no deviation from the approved plans without written approval from the wetland enforcement officer. Should underlined so, if discovered that the big blue and proposed stormwater infiltration or alert the function of the stormwater system shown on the approved plan, the wetland enforcement officer shall consult with the town engineer to determine whether the changes of the project design are necessary. Nine, within ninety days of completion, the work and shall be provided to the wetland enforcement. Ten, wet management shall include the following procedures of land and stormwater management by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Plans with these procedures shall be submitted and ended with the wetland A, parking lots, parking parking lots, sidewalks, will be swept at a minimum traction used on the breeding spring and remove litter, relation of road saw. At Santa. Um, any owner instituted, instituted legal program that successfully controlled other two seven site from itself, wet, situation connected. Several times daily employees would gather litter in the site to stay. Manscape use of fertilizer, the pesticide will be controlled and limited to minimal amounts necessary for healthy landscaping and net maintenance. Trees will be fertilized no more than once in the spring with an organic fertilizer, shrubs and lawns will be fertilized with organic slow-mo dms fertilizer. Each spin lining of the lawn area to control pH will also be done in the spring, if the soil testing indicates that it's necessary. Pesticides will only be used a problem has clear, been clearly identified in other natural patrol methods are not successful. All pesticide applications shall be licensed applicators where necessary. C, trash production, so, these storage containers with improved will be used to suit the facility that contains will be located in the previous surface such as concrete pad. Passes occur on a regular basis and all trash should be disposed legally off-site. D, outdoor storage, there will be no outdoor storage, hazardous chemicals, fertilizer, pesticide, or retardant anywhere off-site. E, snow removal storage. Snow, it shall be shovel and plow from sidewalk and parking areas as soon as practical during natural during and after winter storms, and deposited in snow storage areas on-site. At catch basins and manholes. The bag that lightens the floor shall pump the dumps, one, uh, on-site each basin and manhole and shall dispose of the sand neatly. For the first three years, each catch, catch basin shall be inspected every four months with one inspection occurring during the month of April. Any debris occurring within the, the one foot, one foot of the bottom of each sub will be removed by a vacuum tractor type maintenance equipment after the first three years inspection, who may be adjusted to meet the inspection show, shall, please be included in the document available. G, stormwater treatment units, the unit shall be clean during construction, and the end of each construction, once at the landscape area fully stabilized for the first year of operation. While in construction, the uni, the unit shall be inspected once every four months of the, of for the month of November, March, July, a ready measuring device shall be inserted into the access chamber in measure of the accumulation will be reported. Debris accumulated within one surface inside the chamber portion of the tank will be removed by vacuum after, after the first year of inspection. The tank shall be inspected at a minimum twice yearly with the inspection occurring in the month of April, in the same manner that described in the above procedure in the operation. Any accumulation within the, of the work surface shall be removed from the tank and properly disposed off-site. Also, any moving, uh, materials discovered during inspection shall be removed in the tank. A, a detailed maintenance log book should be kept for the unit. If, information is also included in the date inspection record of grid debt, addition of backwood observation of any photo, photo of debris in the data thing before. Uh, and if that comes back the Illinois Wetland Commission's term that proposed work constituted a significant activity in held public, public hearing in according with CGS chapter one twenty-four. Well, that is, it a significant activity held in a public hearing in accordance with the one twenty-eight, seven D, we addressed it actual impact of the wetland research. Soil and test pit data required to be submitted for review and approval by town engineer and the consulting soil scientist, with the form the applicant statement. In the record concerning the sustainability of underlying soils in the area that under training into wetland stormwater treatment locations. Right, the Illinois Wetland Commission finds that the bond is necessary to ensure the installation of maintenance of the sediment, it was in an adequate survival of the wetlands, planting for the, for the project. As the condition of proposal, I, I believe addresses the reasonable equivalent alternatives.
Thank you, Mike. Um, so.
Mike, you want to read that again? I, I, I lost track.
All right, so we have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, I'll second it.
Tom got you. All right. Any discussion? Everyone okay with the bond amount? All the conditions that we have set? I think we talked this one thoroughly through. All right. Uh, Kathy, can you do a roll call vote on this one?
Yeah, I definitely can, um. Scott Harley?
I'll, I'll not vote.
Okay.
I don't think it'll.
Ryan is not here? Mike Florio? Did he say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, Eddie Albarino?
Yes.
Lawrence is absent, uh, Bertram Schmitz?
Yes.
Bert?
It was a yes, yeah. Yes.
Okay. Thomas Welch?
Yes.
Yes, he said.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, Chris? Porvath?
Yes.
And Douglas Elliott?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Fettis.
Thank you, commission. All members, staff, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, uh, number four B, this is IWC twenty-four dash four, it's gonna be fifty-six Westport Drive. Lenora Orello, on behalf of Bob Doan, PE is the applicant, Jinson Jar is the owner. It's for application for modification of a previous approved IWC permit, which was IWC twenty-three dash four. This is to modify previous inland wetlands permit to add a four-by-seven ramp, relocate a float. This is assessors map fourteen, block four, block fourteen, in the zone R thirty. We were previously granted an ex, uh, extension on this application. The issue was that what was going to be permitted, which is the ramp crossed over the property line onto Boulder Lake Tax District property, and the applicant needed approval from the tax district in order to move forward with this permit. So I know it came in late today, but in our email, we got that letter from the tax district. Did, do I need to read that into the record, or is that?
No, it's, it's in the, it's in the record, so.
But it's basically informing us that they're approving the placement of this frame.
Yes.
That was the only thing holding it up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, right.
Because of the letter that was received today by the Boulder Lake Association and sent out by the Z E L.
Okay.
Uh. So there's a, there's a draft motion also in front of you with a couple of findings, just for the record.
Eddie, do you have that draft motion? Would you?
Yeah, I have, I have, I have everything, yeah.
You mind if I get to?
Absolutely not. Um, that was three twenty-seven. Yeah, um.
Does he, did, did you send this to him? I don't know if Eddie has this.
Everyone.
I emailed it.
I'm not sure that everybody did actually receive this one, I was passing it out to a few folks today, so it might be worth while, either I can read it into the record, any of you want to consider it.
Yeah, you know what, uh, go ahead, because, um, I, I got, I got everything else you sent today, and, um.
So the motion would be to approve IWC twenty-four four for fifty-six Westshore Drive as shown on plans entitled Existing Conditions Plan, prepared prepared for Jinson Jarra and Missouri Villas, uh, fifty six West Shore Drive, Clinton, Connecticut by Don Engineering, dated six twenty seven, twenty three, revised uh to nine twenty nine. Ended up the following findings of fact. Um, application twenty four four is an after the fact request for approval of an installed floating dock and ramp at fifty four, fifty six West Shore Drive. Two, record plans indicate that the applicant is not the same entity as the property owner for the property where the work occurred. The owner of record, the Boulder Lake Tax District Association, has granted written consent for the work pursuant to section seven point three B of the Clinton Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Regulations.
Yeah, so any like second, any discussion? All right, all those voting in favor say aye.
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 Mark, Kathy, you can mark me down if not voting.
Okay, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fettis.
Thanks so much.
All right, um. Number C, W E O applications, or it looks like there are a couple this month, Kathy?
So I, again, I've been out uh for a bit, but I, you know, been working part time from home. Um, we had a application for Countryshire Lane, um, that's all set. Um, we had a one fifteen Long Hill Road. Um, I asked for her to have the wetlands delineated, and when she did, it turns out it's out of the one hundred foot upland review area, so she no longer needs permitting for that from me. Um, forty Stanton Road was an after the fact garage and barn approximately sixty feet from the inland wetlands. Um, and I found somebody went out to do an inspection of the property for me and said that it was, you know, vegetated and and there was no slope or bare soil or anything, so um, giving him an after the fact permit for that. And um, that's all I have right now for wetlands enforcement and W E O applications.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, correspondence, I didn't really see much. Uh, old news, anyone have either old or new news? Nope, um. New business, so set a meeting day in two thousand twenty five, is that just our regular?
Yeah, folks are still okay with the Tuesdays, we'll go ahead and get a schedule together for you for and and just work around the holidays, make sure you you have a calendar, so we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean. What, what did we do this? I like what we did this year for like election day, just pushing it.
Pushing it back a week versus, yeah, yeah.
So as long as the room is available, match that schedule.
Yep.
Um, annual report for budgeting?
Yep, so Sherry is pulling together um the final numbers of, this is the, the period that starts um July one, twenty twenty three and ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. So she's pulling that together for us. Um, it's essentially the format that the commission has used every year with just the application numbers updated. If there's any other kinds of information that folks would like to include other than just kind of a record of this is what the commission does and this is how many applications you reviewed, let us know and we can draft something for you, um, but it's been pretty standard.
We don't, we don't need to check it, yeah. Um, and budget, do we need?
So budget, um, we haven't yet, we haven't had a chance to to formalize the budget yet. Essentially, what we're trying to do with all of the department budgets right now is just keep them even or lower than they were, essentially nothing needs to go up. We have the resources we need in house right now to to do some stuff. The only question I have for this group before we craft the budget for your review in December is whether or not um there are any other professional services that you all anticipate wanting, needing, you know, training opportunities, anything else that you are hoping for in the next year that we will need to go and make sure we have a budget to cover.
Training.
How about stipends, how about stipends for everyone?
Folks are gonna see how far that goes.
Hey, Abby, I, I have a question on that. So for the um inland wetlands training for the commission members, I haven't looked at it recently, and I guess that could be something I can do, but do you know if there's a fee for that?
I don't think there's a fee for the deep one, no. Um, but there, but there are fees for particular workshops or seminars or if people find things that that seem interesting that aren't free, one of you know, sort of give them a nice.
Actually go to the one next Saturday when we can, because we have paid out our spots.
We should, if, so if it's, we don't have a budget to cover everybody going, but if it's like one or two folks, we should probably be able to cover that. So if you want to work with us, if nobody else is interested in going on Saturday and you still want to attend, we can figure that out, that is the same day, that is the sixteenth, so it's the the date of the site potentially, but we can, can work around that, so.
Yeah, that's why I'm not gonna be there. I, it starts, the registration starts at eight A M and it's in Bristol.
Hmm, but we can, if you, if you give me a call, if the commission is okay with it, then then we can certainly work with you, okay?
Especially if there's budget left over.
Yep, yep, we, we haven't spent the whole budget this year, so, yeah, so, yep.
And Abby, the other question I had was, um, and a couple of years ago, we made some changes to the wetlands regulations and we had hired um uh Mike to do them as a consultant. Um, do, do we, if we make any changes, will we need to hire a consultant to update the regulations? Just little things like, um, you know, how many paper copies and and, you know, some of the language, we, we had, we hadn't gotten a chance to go through all of it because we didn't have the money at the time. Mike just put in that one piece about, um, you know, generators and and uh air conditioner condensers and things not needing to go to wetlands unless they have a bigger than ten by ten foot pad.
So I think Kathy, this is a conversation that you and I need to have, and also for the commission, if there are elements of the regulations that you feel are either not working or you are, either the language is confusing or any of those pieces, we can certainly take a look at them. Some of them are statutorily driven, so we're obligated to uphold certain things. Um, any, right now, I don't see a need to send these out for any kind of third party. We have staff in house to be able to do this. I I would imagine that we would need a budget for that.
Abby, I got a question. Are mandated training hours? Um, I know I'm all set for, uh, how long are those hours good for? Like I, I, I think I got eight for.
Yeah, it's two year cycles for the, for Z B A and B and Z. We'll, we'll go through all, everybody's training requirements for various boards and commissions and make sure anybody who's required has, has what they need.
Yeah, because a lot, I don't think a lot of the members know that they need training hours.
And for folks who have not, if you haven't done the deep wetlands training, that is something that you should do and 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 get up to speed on on that. So um what we'll do, I'll, I'll make sure that you have links for anybody who hasn't, or if you haven't done it in a while and you want a refresher, um, every once in a while, I go back and I take a look.
For your pressure, yeah, be nice. Thank you, Abby.
Thank, item eight, chair's comments, the only comment I have is, I believe our next meeting, we need to have an annual meeting as well. So we'll need to elect the new chairman, vice chair, secretary. You know, if you guys are interested in doing the talking next year. Um. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All those voting in favor say aye? All right, thank you.
Good night, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Have a nice evening. Have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too, happy Thanksgiving.